Got it.
This is, it is 7:02. I have, this is the call to order of the regular meeting of the Board of Directors of International Villages Association. May I have the roll call, please?
Marvin Towne.
Here.
Collette Gosman.
Here.
Frances Meszterow, here.
Mark Richman.
Sandy Best.
Here.
John Labriola.
Here.
Joel Miro.
Here.
All directors present, we have a call.
We have a call. Good. Okay. You want to make the motion? Yeah, I do. I need a mic. I would like to make a motion to add an item to the agenda entitled Gerald Miro's remarks.
And adding it to...
Adding it to the...
To the end before Goodenwold.
To the end before Goodenwold. Thank you.
I second.
Marvin?
Yes, I second.
Any comments from the board? Any comments from the unit owners? Roll call, please.
Collette Gosman.
Yes.
Frances Meszterow, yes. Mark Richman. Hello, Sandy Best.
Okay, yes.
John Labriola.
Yes.
Gerald Miro.
Yes.
Marvin Towne.
Yes.
Majority pass, six to one.
I'd just like to make one comment before we get to the next. If there are any non-unit owners in the audience, we ask that there's no participation by non-unit owners. Thank you. May I have a motion to waive reading of the minutes of the previous meetings?
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the meeting, uh, reading of the minutes of the last meeting.
Correction, please. The motion needs to read, waiving the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of December 6th, special meeting of January 13th, and budget meeting of December 17th for units.
Just say in motion as presented.
You make that motion, right?
Yeah, I'd like to make that motion.
And seconded by Colette. Roll call, please.
Colette Gosman.
Yes.
Frances Meszterow, yes. Mark Richman.
Yep.
Sandy Best.
Yes.
John Labriola.
Yes.
Gerald Miro.
Yes.
Marvin Towne.
Yes.
Passed by majority.
Unanimous. Next on the agenda is the President's message. Thank you all for coming down. There are two items to be voted on tonight. A moisture test for the Nottingham and the February Board meeting. Jason will discuss the moisture test. I'll briefly mention the February meeting. The election is now set for Tuesday, February 18th, one day after the third Monday in February, the date for the regularly scheduled Board meeting. Some unit owners have expressed the opinion that it would be more prudent for the new Board to deal with any and all normal association matters. So I thought it appropriate that we decide, that we decide whether or not to hold the regularly scheduled meeting on February 17th. I want to mention the progress the Association has made in dealing with violations. Since we started focusing on violations in June of 2012, about 240 violations have been issued and dealt with by the committee. I'm happy to report that nearly 90% of them have been cleared, and the committee will shortly be asked to meet to deal with the most recently issued violation letters. A word about the upcoming election. This year, 2014, is vitally important for our village, from both the point of view of the Association and that of view, the unit owners. We have made remarkable progress since the dark days of late 2011 and early 2012. Our Association is now in the black. In fact, preliminary figures show that we actually ran a slight budget surplus in calendar year 2013. This is a dramatic turnaround from the recent years of annual deficits running into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. The number of non-paying units are the lowest since AMG took over. Banks are seriously considering providing us with financing for the necessary repairs and updates. And I'm happy to report that our property values have nearly doubled since the worst of the recession. Most unit owners believe that our community is being professionally managed. In fact, there is near universal agreement that our management team is the best in memory. However, we still have some critical issues facing, facing us this year. These include the Nottingham roof, the falling concrete from the balconies, and the renovations of the six remaining buildings representing a majority of unit owners. So when you vote on Tuesday, February 18th, I encourage you to consider each and every candidate and choose the ones you believe will move our community forward. Choose the people you think will work together towards keeping our Association financially healthy. Choose those who are committed to making our village a safe, attractive community for all our residents. I believe that achieving these goals will keep up the demand for our units. And it's simple supply and demand economics. The more people want to buy here, the more our values will go up. Finally, it has been a privilege serving as your elected representative for the last two years. And I am grateful to the other directors to have had the opportunity to serve as the Association President. I want to thank all of them for their willingness to dedicate their time and energies to reestablish our financial stability and to the restoration of our community, so that we could all proudly say that International Village is truly the jewel of Inverary. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the management report.
Good evening. Okay, in January, and of course, the end of December, with security, we've hired a new security clubhouse guard, Jennifer Nuret. She is in her second week working and still in training. We're continuing to monitor the parking lots and the cars. Elwood is working on the violation list, closing out the violations in compliance and generating a list for possible hearings and fines for those not in compliance. Staff meetings continue to review and retrain policies and procedures. Elwood has been instructed to continue with the lighting report in the evenings, once per week, to report all lighting issues. We ask that all residents inform their guests to park in the guest parking and not in a assigned spot. We have been finding that people are parking in other people's assigned spots. So although we have security here telling them at the gate, it would help if you, if the residents would alert their guests that they should park in a guest spot, let them know where it is, and also just reiterate to them, did you put the parking pass on your dashboard? Because we're having issues with that as well. Maintenance completed the concrete repairs at the entrance to the Orleans, and the installation of the tile has started. Next week, we will start painting the trash rooms, starting with the, starting with all the non-renovated buildings first. We have completed the carpet cleaning in all the buildings, continuing to paint the Disney lamps and posts throughout the property. We are almost complete with removing the growing weeds from the balconies. Almost all the buildings are complete, because we did have some stuff growing through the balconies. We do need to kill the weeds on property. In an effort to save money, we will test a small area with our own labor to treat the weeds and grass. If this works well, we will treat the entire property. We're working on a system for deodorizing the trash rooms to assist with eliminating as much of the odor as possible. The indoor spa blower pump was repaired, and we repaired three leaks in the indoor pool, which will assist with our savings to our very aggressive water budget next year, this year. With landscaping, we continue to review and repair sprinklers. Clive, who's our representative on the Inverary Master Association, is working with the master to ensure that the ficus and irrigation outside the walls of Inverary Village are repaired. I will be meeting next week with the master to discuss this as well. Our landscape company has treated our ficus for whitefly at no additional charge. We will continue to monitor. Due to the peak season for the leaves falling from the trees, the company will be out this week, especially just for leaf removal. We replaced sod behind the Orleans and continue throughout the property as needed. And of course, as always, we'd like to thank Christine Bates for volunteering her time and continuing to maintain the flowers and plants at the main entrance of the community, which she volunteers her time for to make sure that it stays nice and flourish. With projects, the laundry room at the Edelweiss is almost complete. We're waiting for the city final inspection sometime this week. Doors to be placed on the storage units. Once inspected, the laundry room will be open for use. We did clean out the second racquetball court, and the ping pong table is set up for resident use. The clubhouse passed its yearly fire department inspection, and the Grenoble fire alarm installation is moving along. They'll complete the individual apartments this week, and they will be ready for final inspection in the second or third week in February. One of the things I would ask the board to do is add to the vote, to add to the agenda, the election monitor, who has already been on the schedule, but I'd just like a formal approval, even though I understand everybody wants, wants the election monitor. Just for procedural purposes, I would like to have that added to the agenda to approve the, and you'll see it, I think it's the very last page of your packet, for Nan Green. I'm sure you'll all remember the email that was sent a month ago regarding this.
Nan Green?
Yeah. So if you can, someone can make a motion to add this agenda item, I guess, right before Jerry's.
Just, I just looked at it. The wrong date is on this document.
No, no, that's okay, because we did this prior to. She did the invoice before.
Okay. Would you like this right now?
Yeah, yeah, just so that we have it on the agenda. If you can make the motion to put this on the agenda, the approval of the election monitor, right before Jerry's item.
I, I'd be so moved, please.
Motion by...
Motion by Frances. Do I have a second? Seconded by...
I second it.
Any comments from the board? Any comments from the unit owners? Call the roll, please.
Collette Gosman.
Yes.
Frances Meszterow, yes. Mark Richman. Sandy Best.
Yes.
John Labriola.
Yes. Yes.
Gerald Miro.
Yes.
Marvin Towne.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Now we come to a point that is bittersweet for me and probably for the community. Chad, who we've all grown to love, has been promoted. AMG sees the value. He's been training, and I think he's been doing a very good job, I might add. And we are moving him to his own very first property as property manager. So I, I would like everyone to put your hands together to congratulate Chad. I don't have to say Chad was instrumental in helping your, your community get to where it is financially, from a residential services standpoint, and, and much more. There's not, this, I can, I can be standing up here for 20 or 30 minutes talking about everything Chad has done, and we thank you for that, and I thank you for that. With that, I would like to introduce Colin Gold, if you'll stand for a moment. Colin Gold is going to be replacing Chad, Moone can replace Chad. He'll be replacing Chad's position as the assistant manager. And Colin comes from similar backgrounds. He's worked for several management companies. He's worked for several hotels, and he's very, very qualified for the position. So we can welcome Colin to the family. And thank you. I turn it back to you, Jen.
Question. I noticed that the financial information is missing on this report. I thought you wrote to us that you were going to have December information.
Yes, well, I'll tell you about the financials. We are in journal entry mode. We do have a draft. I don't want to produce the draft, because there's still adjustments that have to be made. And Mark has been reviewed as well, has reviewed it, and he will go into it in his treasurer's report. I can tell you, and Mark will, Mark will actually be able to tell you, because it's part of his report, but we, we should have the, the final journal entries this week. However, your financial picture looks very good, and Mark will go into it.
Mark is going to go into it?
He's just going to explain the...
We had no information in our packet about what Mark is going to be talking about?
Well, I just gave Mark the information about, not even a half hour ago, because this is not for print, because it's a draft. This is just being, to give out the information on a year-end, because to finish December, which is the last month of the year, you have to close out the year, because you're using that. There's a lot of adjustments that are made in your final month of the year. So to give you a number, you are, you have a surplus right now in December. Your year-end financial will end with some form of a surplus. And I don't, I can't give the exact number, because it will change this week, because we're doing journal entries for the auditor.
The confusing part that I have is the fact that while I hear Marvin and his statement about...
I can't hear a word that I can say.
I don't have any mic down here. The confusing part to me, I know I was listening to Marvin's comments in the beginning about balanced budget and surplus and all that kind of stuff. And I reviewed last month, you know, the November information that you sent. And as a businessperson, I don't see surpluses when you're mixing extra collections in with the operating budget. To me, the operating budget, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the operating budget's about $300,000 short from last year to this year through November. That's my recollection. I don't have it in front of me. And now December, I mean, we may have other collections as far as collections from, um, collections, you know, from people that owe us. In one case, we had a $50,000 bonus from two units that we sold. But that is not part of the operating budget, and that doesn't put us in balance. That only is collections that go to help us. And then, and our income from the properties we've taken go to help us. But I, I'm just, I was expecting, because you wrote to us, that we were going to have even a...
That I was working on it.
Even a draft for it.
Yes.
Well, you were working on it, and you expected to have it for the meeting. That was my understanding, and I see nothing. I don't see Mark's comments. I don't see your comments. And yet I see references to a surplus. And I, as a businessperson, I'm not looking at a surplus. I'm looking at a shortage that is being augmented by additional collections. So I look at it differently. Maybe I'm wrong. Explain to me how I'm wrong.
Okay, the way you're wrong, and I don't like to say somebody's wrong, but the way you're wrong is, the way, the way a, the way an income statement works is what you collect and what you pay out. When your collections that you're talking about decrease your bad debt expense. So if it decreases your bad debt expense, you have less of expense there, which is what you budget for. And anything that you take in, dollar-wise, goes towards your budget, except for special assessment. That you won't see on the report. You'll see it in your year-end financials, because you have to account for it. But you don't have, your, your shortfall that you're talking about, that 300,000, there's no shortfall, because the reason why you have 300,000 in those expenses is because you collected 300,000, you're talking about the roof. You're talking about the things that were supposed to be in your special assessment.
No, I'm talking about not, not roofs, not capital expenditures. I'm talking about operating.
We don't have a 300, I don't know where you're looking at a 300,000. You'd have to show me that, because I've never seen...
I'll, I'll show you. I'm just disappointed that we don't have the December figures. And then I'd be able to point to things. Here, I have nothing to point to. So we'll put this off for another time, okay?
Okay.
Now is the treasurer's report?
Well... If Jason had more time to do the work that he was supposed to do, instead of some spurious unrelated nonsense, we might have the numbers that Jerry was looking for. Since we don't have the numbers, we have approximations, and we'll have to do with that until the regular numbers are at hand. As a guess, the numbers are pretty good. For the first time in years, somewhere in the vicinity of $15,000 is the surplus end December 31st, 2013. For the entire year, we are approximately, and this is a variable number, 24,000 in the black. For those of you that worry about all kinds of assessments, maintenance increases, you can forget it. Those things, maintenance increases, are behind us. They are over and done with, except for the modest yearly things, which we should have been paying on a yearly basis, and didn't for six years, of approximately 1.5 to 2% a year. Aside from that, the large maintenance increases are over. Hopefully. Now I'm going to talk to you about another thing, which is the special assessment account, which for the first time in five or six years has gone to bed and is over and done with. Let me explain to you what has happened. On January 1st, 2012, the amount of money due Wells Fargo for its loan to International Village January 1st, 2012, $3.5 million plus. In the two years that have transpired from that point in time to December 31st, 2013, the balance is now $2,176,010.11. In other words, in two years' time, we have paid down a principal balance of $1,375,216.58. We have made up all the deficit that prior inappropriate behavior caused. It's all taken care of and done for the moment. We will continue to pay it down as the days go by. Several things to think about as we go forward. We're going to have modest, modest, if any, maintenance increases over the next few years. But we certainly have special assessments to look forward to. We have to fix roofs. We have to take care of balconies. We have to refurbish buildings. Your board, whoever it may be, will have to deal with those things as you go along. I'd like to advise you of several things about that process. Herefore, in the past, all funds spent were taken willy-nilly from the special assessment account. Were taken willy-nilly from the balance of funds that became to us in the settlement of the Wilma account. Please be advised at this point in time. There is no insurance money to be had at this point in time. It's gone. Please be advised that the special assessment account is now segregated and will remain segregated until that loan is paid off. And there's nothing that anyone else can do without major malfeasance about that issue. It's now going to be automatic. That's right? As your treasurer, I ought to advise you of one other expense that you might have that you hadn't considered and no one's talked about. Seems to me that we last year approached the Nader in taxation, real estate taxation of this place. You, as unit owners, get, pay a tax yearly to the city of Broward, or the county of Broward. I would advise you that I think those taxes are going up. If our recent experience of improved financials in terms of monies received for properties sold, which have risen, as best I can tell, from the $30,000 area to perhaps the $50,000 to $55,000 area for a one-bedroom apartment, if that experience is true, which I think is valid, then you can start looking forward to your property taxes starting to edge up. We've all had a big boom throughout the last few years, in which our property taxes went down considerably. It seemed to plateau last year, which is this year, which is what we're paying. In 2015, I think they will start to go up again. How high they will go remains to be seen. And finally, well, I think that's it. I have nothing else to say. Thank you.
Next is the sales and lease report. Can I have the mic?
Sure. Thank you. For the period December 12th, 2013, through January 15th, 2014, the committee reviewed 29 sales, leases, and occupancy applications and took the following actions. Approved the following role of lease agreements. Edelweiss 2K, one-bedroom, $1,000 a month. Marseille 3N, one-bedroom, $850 a month. Bordeaux 2B, one-bedroom, $850 a month. Idlberg 2S, one-bedroom, $850 a month. Zurich 3W, two-bedrooms, $1,100 a month. Edelweiss 3E, two-bedroom unit for $1,000 a month. And Nottingham 3L, a two-bedroom unit for $995 a month. Interlock, and we approved the following new annual leases. Interlock and 3S... Interlock and 3S, one-bedroom unit, $7...